I would like to welcome each of you to tonight's meeting. June the twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two, at this time, the meeting is officially called to order. If everyone please would stand for a moment of silence and then the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, welcome to tonight's meeting. The school board meeting is an advertised meeting held in the public, not a public meeting. We have an established advertised agenda that will be followed. Anyone wishing to address the school board may do so during the public input section of the meeting. You'll have three minutes to address the board. The sign-in sheet to speak during public input is on the table to the left as you enter the boardroom. Please sign in if you wish to speak. Our school board minutes are being recorded this evening by Ms. Bishop, confidential secretary and secretary to the superintendent. Board members present are Ms. Williamson, Mr. Carroll, Ms. Gibson, Ms. Bell, and myself, Bart Offer. Tommy Reeves, our school board attorney, is present, and our superintendent, Ms. Shirley Joseph. At this time, the meeting is officially called to order. The amendments to the agenda, we have some amendments. Two point one, two point one will become five point one-two, the financial report for May of two thousand and twenty-two. Two point two, the annual service agreement with the K-12 lift will become five point one-three. And the next item that I'm adding is back on May the second, the board voted concerning hours of an employee concerning their drop in hours, and we need to readdress that because there's still some issues. So that will be five point one-four. Does anyone need those repeated? Does anyone need those repeated?
No.
Okay. If there's, that's all the amendments to tonight. The next item, three point O, public input, is there any public input? There's no public input for tonight. Okay. Okay, under the consent items, there's quite a few, let me go over them here. Okay, four point one is the minutes from the June the sixth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting. Four point two is the Agency of Healthcare Administration, ACHA, agreement with the district. Four point three is the agreement with Omni and TSACG Compliance Services. Four point four is a contract with Infinity Communication, E-Rate three sixty. Four point five is the Northeast Florida Education Consortium, or NEPEC, agreement. It would be July the first, two thousand and twenty-two, through June the thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. That would include our Skyward Finance, HR, and student software, and an education technology service agreement with NEPEC. Four point six is Title V, Part B, rural and low-income school grants, and that's for the total of seventy thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars. The original was fifty-nine thousand and thirty-two dollars, and there was an amendment to it to bring it up to the seventy thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars. The next, four point seven, is a dual enrollment agreement with Florida A&amp;M for students at MCHS. Four point eight is Lafayette County Inner District Private School Service Agreement. And that is a service agreement we have within that district for any private school students from Madison County that are in their district out of school. Four point nine, dual enrollment internship proposal. And the question I had about that, Mr. Reeves, do we need to advertise that because it almost looked like a policy? The, the four point nine, the dual enrollment internship agreement?
I'm not seeing that.
That's good, I think.
Because that's a JavaScript.
No, it was.
Okay.
This is, it's a job description behind it also.
It just looked like something that may would.
Looks like this right here. And then, yes, it's the sheet before that, and this.
It's a job description, then it, performance responsibilities, and then it stated the internship, potential internships that they have in the county.
Okay.
So what? Okay, it's listed as a proposal, but it looks like a job description, so what, what are, what are we trying to do here? What's the, what's the point?
To, to bring about an internship for high school students to do student work and get school credit. And we have the internship potential, I guess, businesses that are willing to do it or to take on students, and what the qualifications are to be in the, to be in this program.
And this says students will be paid according to statement.
That's, that's something. That's under, under personnel. This is four point nine, the dual enrollment internship proposal.
Okay, when I click on four point nine, this comes up.
This job description comes up?
Yeah.
Does it say about, mind if it say about being paid?
The terms of employment?
Students will be, second from the bottom up, above evaluation. This isn't OPS, it's really two different things. You've got your internship, and then you've got your OPS workers.
Well, an OPS would be someone employed with the district. An internship is somebody working for a private entity outside the district trying to get job experience, right?
Yes.
So I don't, I mean, I don't think we would have a job description for an internship. I think you'd have an agreement that just, these folks, that says they're gonna let your student come out there. So am I not understanding?
Okay, this, this OPS job description, this is for some student workers to assist with tutoring students during the school day. And that was paid out of one of those grants, Essa grants that we received, that's what this OPS student working on.
So is this in the wrong, this should be in the personnel, and then the internship potential should be under this?
Yes, that's two different things.
So this just got put in the wrong spot? Okay, so, so, four point nine, the dual enrollment internship proposal is just.
That's just what it is.
To advertise internship potentials. You have Dixie Cattle, Superior Trees, Hudson Farms, Jenkins Lawn Care, Farmers Cooperative, Madison Veterinary, Harris Farms, Townsend Livestock, Crystal Tractor, Shane Roland, L&amp;W Slaughterhouse, Shadrick Blueberries, and Allison Acres are the internship potentials. Four point ten, Taylor County Inner Agency Agreement for Private School Services. Four point eleven, Cisco Call Manager Software Upgrade, time and material up to sixty-four hours, a total of, a total of sixteen thousand dollars for the Cisco upgrade, and that would be all of the consent items. Is there a motion concerning the consent items or a question?
What's the, what's the Inner District Private School Services, what is that?
Well. It would.
One from Lafayette and one from Taylor. What does that mean? What do they do?
Let me get to the. Based upon what was written, the Federal Elementary and Secondary Act, or ESSA, in Title I, Section of eleven-twenty, and Associated Regulation, two hundred point sixty-two, B-one-I, defines private school children as those who reside in participating public school attendance areas of a school district, regardless of whether the private school they attend is located in the same district in which they reside. Therefore, the school district in which the child resides is responsible for providing services to the child or to arrange to have services provided by another district. For purposes of this agreement, the district in which the school, the school resides will be called the resident district. The district in which the student attends school will be called the receiving district. The purpose of this agreement is to provide for services to private school students who reside in Taylor County School District but attend private schools in another district. Does that clear it up, Mr. Carroll?
Not really. I mean, I don't.
I, I think what they're, what they're driving at is, if you've got a student that's an ESE student and that kind of thing, when, when they go to a private school, they're still entitled to services from the public school district. So if you, and I, I don't, and I, as we're talking here, I don't know that we have any private schools left in Madison County, do we?
Yeah.
Yes, we do.
Yes.
At the church.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, you're right, you're right.
In the testament.
Anyway, so theoretically, if you had a Taylor County student that was going to school in Madison, we would provide the ESE services for that student, and then they would compensate us for that.
Or if we had a student in Madison going to.
To a private school in Taylor.
Taylor. They would provide the services and give us money for that.
Even, even if it's a private school.
Right.
Yeah, because if a Madison kid was going to a Madison private school and they had ESE, we have responsibility for ESE services.
I got you, okay.
Or, or in Mayo, there's some private, there's a private school, I think, in Mayo, and we must have some students from Madison County.
That's there.
That's going to school in there.
And they have to be ESE? They don't have to be ESE, do they?
Well.
But we wouldn't, we wouldn't have to pay for that.
They're allowed to go wherever they like, but if, if an ESE student going to a private school is entitled to public.
ESE services.
Service, ESE services at public expense.
I got you.
And they're entitled to it from their, from the district in which they reside. So if we have a Madison ESE kid going to Lafayette private school, either we could drive down there every day and give them their ESE services, or Lafayette can do it in Billings.
I got you.
And it's for a fair.
I, I got you.
And it's for.
We call our ESE.
Yeah, it's, it's a. But we would be financially responsible.
We, we would be finan, for our kids that were going out of district, we'd be responsible for their kids coming into our district. They would be financially.
I got you.
Are there any other questions? Did that clear it up, Mr. Carroll?
Yes, it did, yes.
Any other questions? Okay, is there a motion?
I make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
It's been properly moved by Ms. Williamson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gibson. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the consent items, show a hand, please. Five of Ms. Bishop for approval of consent items. Okay, five point one, we have waypoint expansion. And, and looking at that is, unless something's changed, it's, it's a model of Florida Charter School application, so there's really not anything here about the waypoint expansion.
What she wanted to do, she wanted to serve, she was updating her, the contract, and they wanted to serve virtual students that's located in a different county. She was supposed to be here to present this to you, but the last time she was here, she was talking about us serving kids from.
Hernando.
Hernando County virtually, and they're being enrolled in, in our waypoint.
When is their present charter up?
It's a five-year, so this is second year, they've completed the second year, so they've got three more years. But they wanted to amend their charter.
So this isn't a renewal application, it's an application for an amendment?
Yep. But she's not here, and we've, she's requested this three times to be on this agenda.
I'll, I'll be honest. I'll just be honest about this, I feel very uncomfortable doing any amendment for a school that we cannot have people go and make sure things are going like they should be going.
We've already discussed this before.
And, and we have, and, and that's a long ways, Brooksville is a long ways for Ms. Joseph to have to go down there and make sure that things are going right.
And tell me, that could be the procedure, if that charter school is under us and they needed an expulsion, who would do that?
That's a great question.
That's a very good question. That's something you need to consider before you vote on this.
If, if there wasn't an incident at that school that someone needed to, wanted to file a lawsuit against, who would they file it against?
Us.
This student would be virtually, and, and I'm not talking behind her back, she has been invited to this meeting several times to explain this to us.
I, I think at this point, I, I probably wouldn't go any further with it. I mean, if she knew it was coming tonight and it's not here, we just need to either contact her and say, look, she can either come at the next meeting or you know, we can deny it.
Okay, this has been going on about at least two months.
I mean, she knew it was gonna be tonight?
Yes, she knew it was tonight.
Didn't call or anything and say, hey, I can be there?
I have not received a call from her today. Ms. Bishop, have we received a call from her today?
Well, can we make a motion that, based on the information that we have at this time, that we choose not to do this?
Okay, I, I tell you what I'd probably recommend, is why don't you do a motion to deny it without prejudice, which means they can resubmit it when they get other stuff and can answer questions and all that. But right now, it's denied, and then it doesn't have to come back again. You know, because it's very hard for y'all to make a, make an intelligent decision on this, and nobody's here to answer questions.
I thought we were supposed to get, she was supposed to get us something from DOE or something other way.
She, she was, back, I want to say back in April or May.
Yeah. I mean, I would do it that way, I don't think you're really, I mean, thi, this isn't a renewal of their charter, it's asking for an amendment. Well, they can come back, ask for another amendment if they want to, but they, they need to provide some backup and answer some questions.
Oh, yeah, because there's a lot of questions, I mean, I've never really even heard of, like, a district up here in Madison County being over a charter school in Hernando County.
Well, and I know that the, I know in Jefferson that Somerset wanted to do this, and what they wanted to do was, it wasn't that you would be over a school somewhere, it was the school would be located in Jefferson, and they would take virtual students from other places. So you could, a virtual student could be sitting in Orange County, and they could sign up for that school the same way a virtual student signs up for Florida Virtual School, and, and it would be the same thing. That, that, and, and Jefferson never did it, and so we never had to actually work out all those issues. But that was one of the things that Somerset wanted to do, and then they said other people did it, but now I, I don't know that. I know they said that, but I don't know that that was the actual.
Wouldn't it be easier if they asked Hernando County to do that?
Tell back to Hernando County.
It, it would, I, I think the, I think there's a legitimate way to do this. If, if I have a, an, an online or a virtual school that serves two students in this county, and three students in that county, and four over here, it probably would make sense to have one school somewhere do all of that, and I, and, and, and I think that might make sense, but it just, it just hasn't been fleshed out for yet.
Not enough info.
Not enough information at this time.
I think the campus she's talking about is in Brooksville.
Right.
Um, she really, the campus is out there at Waypoint, she wants the student virtually to, it be.
Yeah, but there's a Brooksville campus, it's a residential campus, according to what I'm reading here.
Yeah, that's what she said.
That's where the kids will be housed, but they will be doing classes through Waypoint here.
Through Waypoint with virtually, but what we asked, what, I remember, Mr. Offer asked what would DOE and to get the, the, the ruling, what DOE says about all that, I remember.
Is it allowed?
And I hadn't seen anything that's.
DOE says it's allowable, but I did speak with the superintendent down there, she did approach, that superintendent was approached, and they chose not to pursue it.
Okay, is there a motion to deny without prejudice?
I move to deny without prejudice the waypoint expansion request.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Ms. Gibson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Williamson, any further discussion? Okay, if there is none, all those in favor of denying without prejudice, show a hand, please. Five of Ms. Bishop for approval. Okay, five point two, staff travel requests, seven eighteen through seven twenty-one of two thousand and twenty-two. There's a staff travel request to the B Summer Institute in Orlando, Florida. Melinda Ritchie and Melissa Cherry will be attending, the cost is around seven hundred and seventy-four dollars. That's all of the staff travel requests. Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve the staff travel request.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Mr. Carroll, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Bell. Just a second, please. Might just double checking, that was the only one. Okay, it's been properly moved by Mr. Carroll, seconded by Ms. Bell, all those in favor, show a hand, please. Five of Ms. Bishop for approval. Five point three, the TRIM calendar update revisions.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We just wanted to make sure that you knew the dates on the TRIM. We submitted something for last meeting, and since then, we've had a lot of revisions going on. So we wanted to make sure that you understood that the, on the eighteenth, the superintendent will be presenting of July, should be presenting a budget to you that we're trying to pull together right now, after we roll all the projects closed. We're trying to get that budget ready, so it'll be, it should be ready for the meeting on the eighteenth. However, right now, the property appraiser has given us a preliminary estimate of our taxes at around nine hundred and ninety thousand dollars, or nine hundred and ninety million? Nine hundred and ninety million, I think, and the. Pardon me?
The taxable value.
Taxable value. And the conference report that the department put out estimated it to be at nine hundred and twenty million. So we have to wait for the property appraiser to make sure to certify the actual value. They have until the nineteenth, July nineteenth. We have to, though, have a board meeting sometime between the first and the twenty-fourth, which is on a Sunday. So we have to pu, pull it to you on Tuesday, the eighteenth, hoping that they will have it certified before the nineteenth. If they don't have it certified by the nineteenth, or by the eighteenth, when we bring it to you, we'll have to have another board meeting that week. And we're proposing that that board meeting, which can only, if you wanted to, just deal with that one item, would be on like a Friday, because that would be our last possible date before the twenty-fourth. So that's primarily the major change on this. The rest of them, we're gonna have to advertise on the twenty-ninth for the tentative budget meeting, and then we're gonna have the budget meetings on the August first. And then by September sixth, we should have the final public meeting. So that's what, primarily this is, it builds in a slot there on July twenty-first of a potential meeting if we don't get the value certified by the property appraiser before the meeting on the eighteenth.
That's fine, just notify us by email concerning, in the years past, we've had special meetings just for.
Yeah.
This, so it's not, I mean.
And we should know probably, typically DOE, or I mean, the property appraiser does it like the Friday before, so we are expecting it to come like on the sixteenth, but if it's not here, we should know by the morning of the eighteenth.
So the twenty-first is on Thursday rather than a Friday?
I'm Thursday, yeah, Thursday, I'm sorry. Thursday at five o'clock. That's the primary change on the calendar.
And that's a tentative, that, that day may be canceled?
That's a maybe, right now, but we will let you know by email whether or not, and it'll, we'll let you know on Monday, the eighteenth, whether or not we have that meeting. Any other questions on the TRIM calendar?
No other questions? Do we need to, by the way, or not?
Um, it'd probably be a good idea.
Okay, is there? Okay, is there a motion to accept the TRIM calendar revisions?
I move to accept the TRIM calendar revisions.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Ms. Gibson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Bell. Any discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor of the TRIM calendar revisions? Five oh, Ms. Bishop, for approval.
Thank you.
Okay, five point four, personnel changes. Mr. Killensworth?
Can we do this?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm gonna need to recuse myself from this vote. One of the recommendations is Madeline Gurley is my granddaughter.
Okay, we will, I will separate it out whenever we go to vote on that.
She didn't tell anything about it. I said, I appreciate that.
Would y'all like to do the student OPS tutors first?
Yeah, that'll be good.
Okay, there's three names that, uh, are.
Do the position first.
Okay, you want the position?
Yes.
The job description?
And, and the position in the, in, in here was under four point nine. That was an attachment to four point nine, and that's the job description, which I think is what we're discussing that right now.
Correct. And that one, um, is with a grant, and that is for up through next summer. And there's a number of hours that, you know, a, a participant has to, you know, work so many hours up to. Can't work any, in excess of that, uh, for the summer and, and also for during the school year. But it also, the qualifications as far as it's a high school, uh, student, the GPA, uh, discipline, teacher referrals, and then they turn those forms in back to the, the school site and then forward them to, to us.
How, how would a student be chosen to, or how are they given the opportunity to apply for those?
They, uh, were given opportunities at both the high school, MCHS, and James Madison. Those forms then would be turned into the, or were turned into the principal, and then from there, back to the school side. Now, we did not get the number that we would like, I'm gonna be honest with you, because three kids just, I mean, it's, you know. So we will need to, in the fall, continue to, uh, search for more kids because with this being basically a year and a half process, you're probably gonna have some fallout and some more get back in that still meet the requirement to, to do it. Basically, it's helping, uh, tutor kids in the elementary.
Yep. Does this, do these students refer back to those jobs that we looked at a little while earlier?
No, that's two different things.
That's two different things, okay.
This is a tutoring home that we have with the stu- a grant for students to, as service, peer student tutors.
Okay, they're gonna be tutors, okay. Yeah, thank you.
But, but you're saying that everybody at the high school and at James Madison has been offered.
They've had the opportunity, yes, sir. Now, I will tell you, with three kids, we will need to begin.
How, how many kids do you think you're gonna need for this?
I don't think it's to exceed, like, ten to twelve. I mean, we, there's not, there's not a ton of them because it's based on si- you know, the needs of kids.
But you still got lots of slots open.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We're not anywhere where we need to be, and, and those three there aren't guaranteed that they will stay through the whole thing.
We were given an amount of money too. I mean, it's probably contingent upon the money.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We're not gonna exceed that, and that was where they, they put in the number of hours that they could do during summer school as opposed to during the traditional school year to make sure they don't exceed that. They've already got buffers in there.
I just want to make sure that we, um, make sure that all kids have the knowledge of this and they can decline it if they don't want it. I don't want to hear that I didn't know about it.
Well, how, how are they informed? Let me ask that.
They were, uh, given forms at the schools.
Okay.
And then they make announcements and then give them out, and then they, you know, have to go and, uh, see the teachers to get the recommendation letters and things of that nature.
So they make announcements and they're given off, so.
But like I said, even with, you know, the three kids that did do it, we still need to, in the fall, go back and solicit it, uh, more for, for the duration here.
Okay, is there a motion for the, um, OPS tutor, tutors?
I'll pull the position first.
To approve the position?
Job.
Job description position?
I'll make the motion to approve the job description position for the OPS tutors.
It's been properly moved by Ms. Williamson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Carroll. Any discussion? If there's none, all those in favor, show a hand please. Five oh, Ms. Bishop, for approval for the job description. Okay, the next one, um, to approve the student OPS tutors, you have Kyler Ritchie, Josh Hill, and Hope Horn are the three students. Is there a motion to approve this OPS student tutors?
I move to.
Make the motion to approve the OPS student tutors.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Ms. Bell. Is there a second?
Second.
By Mr. Carroll. Any discussion? There's no discussion. All those in favor, show a hand please. Five oh, Ms. Bishop, for the approval of the OPS student tutors. Okay, the next item is personnel. Um, the first one we're gonna do is we're going to, um, do, um, we will do Ms., um, Madeline Gurley by herself where the board can, where Ms. Williamson can recuse herself and the board can vote on her as a non-instructional employee for the, um, eight-three, two thousand twenty-two through five-twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-three. She's a parapro at Lee Elementary School. Okay, is there a motion to approve, um, Ms. Gurley as a parapro for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year?
Uh, I move to approve Madeline Gurley at Lee Elementary, August twenty-two to May twenty-three as a parapro.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Ms. Gibson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Bell. Um, all those in favor, show a hand please. Four oh, um, Ms. Bishop, Ms. Williamson, um, recused herself.
And, and Ms. Bishop, you, you know you have that form you have to fill out at the supervisor relation office, excuse me.
Okay, um, the next information or all the rest, Mr. Killensworth?
Okay, uh, while we're there, can we go ahead and, and the remainder of the non-instructional employee recommendation? I'm asking your approval for them for, uh, the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
Okay.
Which will be eight, eight remaining people.
Couldn't we just do all of them?
Get all of them together?
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, that's. You talking about the whole page?
Instructional, non-instructional, everything.
Okay, okay. All right, um, I ask, uh, that on personnel, that, uh, the recommendations for the twenty-two, twenty-three year on, on this sheet, that, uh, request your approval.
We have quite a few employee, um, instructional recommendations, quite a few non-instructional recommendations, and quite a few resignations. Is there any, any discussion, um, concerning any of the?
I talked to Ms., uh, Joseph and I've talked to Mr. Killensworth about the principal at the high school, and that's the only one I, 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 I'm not gonna be able to vote for.
Okay, you don't, you don't, I mean, you can, you can just do that whenever we vote.
Oh, okay. That's the only discussion I had.
And, and I, I've also spoken with Ms. Joseph, and again, um, I have concerns. Uh, I don't feel that there are concerns worth of, of bringing cause. I mean, they're not cause. My concern is just the, the length of time he's been a principal and some other issues, but again, DOE has given him a license, he has a license, so, um, again, as, this is what Ms. Gibson made the comment at the last meeting. The board, the superintendent makes recommendations based on administration. The only way we can really go against that is if we have cause, and I don't feel that I have cause to go against it, but I just wanted to be on the record that I too have concerns concerning that.
I, I want to add, I was gonna add, thank you for mentioning that, that the, the average person doesn't realize the limitations the board has. We do not place principals in their position, we do not, that is the superintendent. She was elected to do that, so that's her duty. So I, I wanted to make that perfectly clear two weeks ago, and I think I'm gonna reinforce it today. But now, just cause, I'd like to have our attorney explain that, if you will, to the.
Certainly. So the way, um, the, the duties and the responsibilities and duties of the superintendent and the school board are set out by statute. The Florida legislature has, through statute, has decided to divide the duties concerning employees by saying that the superintendent recommends, uh, persons to fill, uh, positions. Once the superintendent has made that recommendation, then the school board, uh, reviews, approves, and actually hires the person. The Florida, and by Florida statute, the school board can only deny a superintendent's recommendation if the su- if the school board finds good cause, and that's a term that's set out in the statute. The statute does not define good cause. In case law though, where courts have, have been asked to look at what good cause is, good cause generally means the, uh, failure to meet the, um, uh, the statutory requirements for the job. So if you have a teacher that's not certified, a principal that's not certified, et cetera, those are fairly easy. If you find that they have violated the, um, the educator's code of conduct, that's another, that's set out by Florida DOE rule, that's another good source of good cause. And other than that, it is generally a finding that whatever, uh, has happened or whatever condition would have an adverse effect on their ability to function within the school district. Those are, uh, pretty high standards that are not often met when school boards try to bring good cause. It is not good cause to feel that a, a person would be in a better position. It's, it would be better for that person to be in a different position. It is not good cause that she thinks somebody else would be better in that position. It is not good cause that something has, um, you know, that, that so- something other, even something that you don't like that they've done, unless it is very plain that that's going to cause some real problem with their effectiveness in their position. Uh, with this district, it is not gonna be good cause.
Right, no. Okay, now, the, okay, let's go back to say someone did have something in the past, but they, if it was, um, I would think the DOE would take their license if it was something that they, that, if they violated something that was illegal or.
So I, I don't believe with this individual, there's any question about certifications or any of that.
His license was never.
Never looked.
I, I hope, okay.
Now, the, the DOE has reviewed, it, I have seen the, the, um, the order where DOE has reviewed about whether or not what he did violated the, uh, code for educators. And they found that he, um, uh, they thought there was a violation, they put him on, I think, probation or something, and, and then he's, he's back. So I mean, it's not, they, they are satisfied apparently with what he did. And then I think, so I think that leaves you with, is there something that would, you know, impair his ability to act effectively in this district? And in my opinion, it'd be hard to show that, that something that happened in a district hundreds of miles away is gonna affect his ability, um, here in this district.
Right, I, I just wanted to make that, and I think I have made it perfectly clear, that it, we do not put the people in the place.
And, and the, yes, absolutely, and, and the way I like to, to, uh, talk about the relationship between the superintendent and the board is for on creating positions and setting the budget, the superintendent makes recommendations, but the board does what it wants, right? And so most, the power's actually with the board. On actually putting persons in positions, it's just the opposite. The superintendent makes recommendations, and ninety-nine times out of a hundred, you're gonna have to approve them because there's not gonna be good cause to reject them. There, there is no just fast and lockdown definition for what good cause is. My recommendation is though, I do not believe a court would find good cause in this situation.
Well, thank you for that explanation.
Just for clarification, um, for the other board members, um, to explain to them, Mr. Reeves, back, if, if, for example, you did have three board members that thought they had cause, we would have to have evidence to go before a judge to present the cause, would we?
What happens is if, if there's, if the board said, okay, we think there's cause, and you vote cause, and you reject the employee, then the superintendent has the right to take that to court, and the board would have to prove to a judge that cause. So it's not enough just to say cause, you've got to actually show the judge what you believe to be cause, and then once he sees it, he's got to agree that, yes, that's, uh, good cause in order to sustain the rejection of that employee by the school.
Thank you for that clarification.
Does anyone else have any discussion, Ms. Joseph?
Okay, I would like to say that I have talked with several of you, as well as the attorney, and I, and I do not take this lightly. And I appreciate the conversation you've had with me, okay, but I do believe in treating people fair and equal. And I've done my research. I would not want to harm our district in any way, okay? And so in the process of recommending persons to employment, we do our homework, okay? And Ms. Killensworth have personally spoken with several people from that district to verify his, uh, qualifications and hopefully his, uh, ability to do, do the job that we're asking of you. And I need you to understand also, uh, we hire everybody on hopefully what they say they can do. But if we ever face with a situation where they cannot perform the duty as needed, we do know what's the next process, and I really thank you for letting me, uh, do this. And I did read, um, the recommendation of the administrative hearing, and bottom line, it says, uh, they don't find fault in certain parts of it. Uh, he didn't quite tell the truth, but, um, sometimes you have to do what you gotta do. I don't condone it, but that's where, to put it frankly, it says, um, based on the foregone finding of fact and conclusion of law, it is recommended that the final order be issued finding that the respondent did not violate that section of the Florida statute and dismissing the allegation of the administrative complaint in that regard, and further finding that was, that the respondent violated, uh, this section by failing to maintain honesty in all professional dealings as required by Florida Administrative Code, but not imposing any further discipline against the respondent or his educator certificate other than the demotion he has already received from the Citrus County School Board. And if they can say that on a document that's public, I, I feel that I, I should go forth with, with presenting him to the board, uh, for a principal at Madison County High School.
Okay, thank you. Um, any further discussion?
Well, listen to Mr. Reeves, I don't, I don't, I guess I got no kind of faith, so, but I am concerned about him beyond, I'm telling you. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Um, with that being said, um, is there a motion to approve the personnel, um, changes?
Oh, I move to approve the personnel changes.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Ms. Gibson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Williamson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, show a hand please. Five oh, Ms. Bishop, for approval of personnel. Five point five, um, school volunteers.
Yes, sir. There are four names, um, that I'm bringing before you today for the volunteer list that's, uh, should be on your sheet now.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the volunteers?
I made the motion to approve the school volunteer list.
It was properly moved by Ms. Bell, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson, um, any further discussion concerning the school volunteers? If not, all those in favor, show a hand, please. Five oh, Ms. Bishop, for approval. Um, five point six is concerning the minimum wage being increased to $15 an hour starting July the first. Um, it was ratified by the union, um, so we, um, is there a motion to, um, to go ahead to start it, um, July the first at $15 per hour?
I made the motion to, um, start the minimum wage, um, the first?
July.
July the first. The wage increased to $15 an hour.
Okay, it's been, um, properly moved by Ms. Bell, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Williamson. Any discussion?
Um, I'd just like to make a little note on that, saying that actually, this didn't come into effect until October 1st, but the board voted the last, I think, two weeks ago to, at the recommendation from the superintendent, and it wasn't a problem, but in other words, normally it would have been October 1st.
It was, uh, the next day it said October 1st.
Yeah, I believe, I think we, it was a five zero, in other words, we were happy to do that. I just wanted to make a note.
Okay, um, all those in favor, um, show a hand, please, of the $15 an hour. Five oh, Ms. Bishop, for approval of the $15 an hour starting July the first. Okay, um, the next items up, we have the policy revisions, and the policy revisions are policy 1420.01, um, drop admin, drop for administration, policy number 3420.01, drop for instructional, policy 4420.01, drop for support personnel, policy 1430.03, sick leave for administration, policy 3430.03, sick leave for instructional, policy 4430.03, sick leave for support staff, policy 1430.06, vacation leave for administration, policy 3430.06, vacation for instructional, policy 4430.06, vacation for support staff. Are there any questions? Um, at this time, we'll open it for public hearing. Does anyone in the public would like to say something concerning these? Policy revisions. Okay, at this time, I'm closing the public hearing. Um, does anyone on the board have any questions or comment? Any questions or comments? No questions or comments?
May I make a statement?
Yes.
Okay, basically, what's going on, those first four, uh, policies that we were doing, we had cleaned up the drop policy, and with the new policy, uh, we will pay full pay for, uh, at whatever rate applicable upon retirement, like any, um, retirement from drop, as opposed to at one time, we did not pay full pay when you got out of drop for sick leave.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Okay, is there a motion to approve the policy revisions?
Um, I move to approve the policy revisions.
It's moved by Ms. Gibson, properly moved by Ms. Gibson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Williamson. Any discussion? Okay, it's been properly moved by Ms. Gibson, seconded by Ms. Williamson. All those in favor, show a hand, please. Five oh, Ms. Bishop, for approval of the policy revisions. Um, five point eight is the permission to advertise the policy.
These policies are basically the adjustments in vocabulary or verbiage, uh, to update them based on Neola's recommendations to the various, uh, policies.
Okay, let me go over them, please.
Yes, sir.
Policy, um, 1213 is student supervision and welfare, policy 3213 is student supervision and welfare, um, policy, um, 4213 is student supervision and welfare. And I'm assuming that's from administrative?
Yes, sir.
Um, instructional and parapro. Yes, it's, that's what it, um, is. Policy, um, 1590 is personnel file, policy 4590 is personnel file, policy 3590 is personnel file, policy 2215 is program of instruction, policy 2410 is school health services, policy 2417 is comprehensive health education, policy 5500 is the student conduct, policy 5511 is dress and grooming, um, policy 5780 is student, um, parent rights, and policy 8141 is mandatory reporting of misconduct. Okay, is there, is there a motion to, um, advertise these policy changes?
I made a motion, motion to, um, advertise the policy changes.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Ms. Bell, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gibson, Ms. Gibson, sorry, I didn't, I heard it, but I didn't see who just said it. Ms. Gibson. Okay, it's been properly moved by Ms. Bell, seconded by Ms. Gibson. Um, all those in favor of permission to advertise the policy changes? Five oh, Ms. Bishop, for permission to advertise the policy changes?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, five point nine is TransFinder software proposal, um, and this is a proposal with the bus, um, service, um, concerning software. The first, um, year for the proposal is $17,895. The second year is $11,750, and the third year is $12,338.
Can I get Mr. Goyer to say a few minute things about this TransFinder?
Um, yeah, so this is new, uh, it's a new software for Transportation Department. It also covers, uh, trip requests, and also handles, um, fleet asset management, so keeping track of bus inspections, old changes, mile, different mileage, uh, benchmarks, things like that with the bus fleet. Um, it's also got a module where the schools can go in and look at a student and what bus route they'd be on, or what pickup, uh, you know, spot they'd be at. So, um, Transportation Department hasn't been happy with the current software, the stuff we have is pretty dated, uh, I think it's been, been here for probably at least the last 10 years, and, um, I'm familiar with TransFinder, it's used for their, their company. So the, uh, the initial, you know, first year has all your setup fees, your initial license and purchase, and then years two and three are just your subscription regayers.
Is, is the idea there'll be a, a renewal fee each and every year?
It's a subscription.
Subscription fee?
So it's going to be $11,000, $12,000 every year on our...
Do we presently have a subscription fee that we're, they're going to get rid of? So...
Yeah, it's not as much, I mean, it's, it's seven or eight thousand right now, I think, so it's, it's a little bit more, but it's also going from, uh, what we have now is we own the license and we just pay upgrades versus this, they don't sell a license, it's only subscription based. Pretty much everything nowadays is going just subscription based.
But you're only talking three, four, five thousand dollars extra a year?
Yeah, yeah, difference in what we're already paying. And it's, we don't have fleet management right now, so, and we don't have several of the other modules, so it's, it's a good upgrade from what we have.
So there's surrounding districts around here that use this? You know of, I mean, you're familiar with it?
I'm, I'm not sure, I've tapped my head, who on uses it? Um, and I, I, I know, Ham, Hamilton County, I'm pretty sure Hamilton still uses it.
He is.
Um, I'm not sure about the others.
But it's better than what we have.
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, I talked to, uh, Mr. Jones a, a good bit ago, and he said that the one we have now, that, that nobody ever used. I mean, the Forestville, the GPS thing, you know, picking up kids, he said it was like two kids' names in the whole thing, had never been used, that we've been paying for it, but hadn't ever been used.
They have been using some, but it was limited usage.
He said it was two names in there. Now, I'm just going by what he told me. So, I mean, we gonna have to use it if we gonna have to get it.
They, they weren't using the route course frame for the routes and, um, the deal is you have to put the names back over from Skyward's end to that, that part, some of the things I've done. As far as running the routes, it was, you know, did, they run, run back over each other, but, um, they were using.
I got you. I'm just going by what I was told.
Okay, why you want to talk about implementation timeframe?
Oh, so, so this, this is for, um, basically next school year. Uh, I mean, it's going to be December or January before they get all their training and they get the, the core software setup. Um, so they'll be using, uh, you know, Versitrans and whatever manual processes they have that starts this next school year, and then, um, and then, starting next school year, so it's going to be, um, 2024, will be fully using this software. It takes eight or nine months to implement this software package because it's, it's very broad and large.
Is there a motion to approve the TransFinder software proposal?
I move to approve the TransFinder. Um, the, uh, TransFinder software proposal.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Mr. Carroll, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Bell. Um, any further discussion? Um, if there's none, um, all those in favor, show a hand, please. Five oh, Ms. Bishop, for approval of the TransFinder software proposal for transportation. Okay, five point 10, um, last meeting, we, um, accidentally forgot to vote, we discussed this, but we forgot to vote on it, so we're voting this meeting. Um, the bid approval for Panetta Elementary School carpet replacement was with Madison Flooring for $34,875. Is there a motion to approve the bid request?
I'll make the motion to a bid, to approve the bid request for the carpet at Panetta School.
Okay. It's been properly moved by Ms. Williamson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gibson. Any further discussion? If there's none, all those in favor of the carpet replacement with Madison Flooring, um, show a hand, please. Five oh, Ms. Bishop, for approval of the bid, approval for, um, Panetta Elementary Schools carpet replacement from Madison, by Madison Flooring. Five oh. Um, five 11, school bus purchase, Ms. Joseph?
Okay, um, we got some more money that we were able to allocate to transportation from Essa, and we'll buy two more buses, uh, one is an 86 capacity van bus for $117,000, and one is a, um, ESC bus, a 47 passenger van for $115,083, and hopefully we can get these a little quicker than we did before.
And these are on the, uh, state contract?
They're on a state contract and everything. Yeah, already approved us plans some more, but these are actual prices, and so I'm bringing that back to you.
Okay. Okay, is there a motion to approve the two buses, um, one an 86 passenger for $117,000, and one a 47 passenger for $115,83, um, bus, two buses, is there a motion?
I made a motion to approve the, uh, school bus purchase.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Ms. Bell, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gibson. Um, any further discussion? When, when are we thinking that they may be in, or we don't know?
I, I don't, I don't know. I just hope, it's going to be the last time than we had before, so they should get them back quickly.
Okay, five oh for, um, for, I'm sorry, it's been properly moved by Ms. Bell, seconded by Ms. Gibson. All those in favor, show a hand, please. Five oh, Ms. Bishop, for approval of the school bus purchases. Okay, five point, um, 12, the financial report for May of 2022, Ms. Rainick?
Okay, um, if you'll look at your report, uh, Fund 1000, which is the general fund, if you look down the first page where you're talking about the year-to-date revenues collected, you will see that there are quite a few of the revenues that have been fully collected so far. However, we still do have a little bit more tax money, and we still do have another couple rounds of FEFP money coming in, Florida Education Finance Program money coming in, so we're not at the end of the route yet, but right now, our revised budget is 19.8 million, and we've received to date 18.1 million. I will direct you to the two lines that off to the right-hand side, you see it says "in Fund 3000 to be transferred at closing." We have, uh, some direction this year from the department where the capital outlay money that comes to us from the charter schools, it actually comes to us and it has to be recorded in the PICO fund as capital outlay, but at the end of the year before we close, we have to move it to the general fund and its expenses. So there's going to be about maybe $250,000 of revenue that's going to be moved into the general fund at that point in time, and if you look at the second part of that Fund 1000, you are going to see that there are already about a hu, $225,000 in expenses against that. So one is going to balance the other as soon as we close out all of our books. Right now, we have a revised budget for expenditures of 20 million point one, which is still about $300,000 over, but keep in mind, it's not reflecting the revenue that's going to come in for the capital outlay either. So, and also keep in mind that we've spent 18.8 million in expenses, only about 82% of what we projected, and we've taken in 91% of our dollars. So right now, it's looking like your, um, unassigned fund balance is about eight and a half percent. That is still on, it's not definite yet until we actually roll all the budgets and catch up with everything. We are just in this last two payrolls, we are paying the teacher incentive money, we are paying all of the differentiated pay dollars, we are paying all of the steps all in this payroll, so you're going to see some dramatic changes in your budget and expenses when we round the year out. And, uh, we did receive an extra $79,000 for student reserve, an additional student reserve in the FEFP. Um, the easiest way to explain it is that they set aside some student reserve to try and offset the loss of the dollars for the family empowerment. They had too much money left in that pot, so they distributed some back to the schools. So we actually got like $79,000 back. It's still, we had over $500,000 that passed through and went out for the charters, for the, uh, family empowerment and the, uh, other pass-through dollars for McKay and, um, Virtual. So those dollars all passed through, over $500,000, but we did get an additional 79 back, so that's going to help. Moving to the debt service fund, we're still trying to, uh, make sure we keep that pretty stable. We've got about $245,000 that we've taken in. We've got about two hundred and forty-five thousand that we've taken in, thirty-three thousand that we have spent, which is gonna hopefully leave us with over three hundred thousand in that fund. Remember, we're trying to protect that fund to pay off a debt of one point one million dollars in the future. Fund Three Thousand, this is where I told you they're gonna take the revenue. So the revenue picture on the top is gonna look a little different because they're gonna take the revenue from the capital outlay and move it over to the general fund. But right now, we have revenues in and the capital outlay of one point four million. And we've had expenses of about two point fi- two hundred, six hundred and fifty thousand. So because we are able to go and use a lot of the Esser dollars for the air conditioning and those kinds of things, we still have not paid for our buses yet, the first three that we've received. So that's gonna be another three hundred and thirty-some thousand dollars is gonna come out of this. So that's looking, it's looking pretty good right now. Four ten is our food service fund. The food service fund is looking like, if you look, follow the expenses and the revenues down, it looks like we're gonna end up with about a hundred and forty thousand dollars in our fund balance for food service. However, that's a little bit misleading because we are showing expenses of almost a hundred thousand dollars for food service equipment. And that equipment will not be received, the revenues for that will not be received until about September. So it's gonna look like we're paying more for it this year, but we're gonna get some of that reimbursement back in September, so it will help the food service fund. Fund Forty-two Hundred, that's all of our title and entitlement grants. We've spent two million, uh, I'm sorry, we've taken in two million, sixty-four percent. We've spent two point three million. We do have money in transit coming back for that, so that fund will be a wash. We are looking at trying to make sure that as much of those funds can be maximized because some of those will roll forward, some of them will not. Fund Forty-four Ten, remember, this is the first big piece of CARES money in the Esser pot of money. We were just paying that out. That that project actually ends in September, so we've pretty much exhausted that project. That will, those projects will kind of level out. In the Forty-four Twenty is the smaller projects of the CARES, the first round of the Esser dollars. And those also are pretty much washing each other out at seventy-seven thousand in expenses and revenues. Note that the one is showing revenues of sixty-four thousand dollars. That actually was closed out by the department, and we only got revenues of five thousand seven hundred dollars there. So that's gonna change that revenue picture on top. But it'll also look, it'll balance itself out. The Four-Four-Three-O, this is the second pot of Esser money. This is the CHRSA money, C-R-R-S-A money. We've taken in three million in revenues, three point four. We've put out three point, almost three point five. We've got about a hundred thousand in transit. This is, this is another set of projects where the department has closed two projects. They have closed the academic two and the enrollment two projects. We were informed on a Friday afternoon that as of two o'clock that afternoon, they would be gone. So we claimed as much as we could claim on those projects, but we probably ended up not expending about close to two hundred thousand dollars on those two projects. And the department says that they will give us the money back in another form of a literacy grant at a later point in time. The Four-Four-Fours, those are the smaller pot of the number-two Esser grants. And we are recording that we have some budget that we're going to be have coming in, but we don't have those dollars or budget in there yet. We haven't spent those three small pots of money there. In the Four-Four-Five-O, now you're talking about the third pot of Esser money. The third, this is the big piece of the third pot. We have put in a million six eighty-one in budget and a million six eighty-one outstanding. However, that budget is for about ten million dollars. About twenty-seven percent of it's gonna roll to the charter schools. So we're, and that project goes till September of two thousand twenty-four. So we're trying to make sure that that gets maximized. And then the Four-Four-Six-O, which is the last project, that's the smaller pieces of the third pot of Esser dollars. Got thirty thousand that we have taken in in revenue, and we've spent thirty thousand. So it's pretty much washing itself out. We're closely monitoring the budgets. We spent all weekend trying to balance everything and try and pull things together as much as we could before the end of the year. We did take the fourth calculation of the FEFP and compared it to what we actually were showing in budget. So that's why you're seeing some budget changes. Some were up, some were down. We're expecting our final calculation to come in, and then we'll actually really know what we're going to get for the school year. Right now, it's as good as we can tell from the fourth calculation.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions concerning the financial report for May? Okay, if not, is there a motion to approve the financial report?
I move to approve the financial report.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Mr. Carroll to approve the financial report. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Williamson. Any further discussion? There's no further discussion. All those in favor, show a hand, please. Five oh, Ms. Bishop, for approval of the financial report. Thank you, Ms. Rainick. Uh, five point one-three is the annual service agreement with K-12 Lift, Ms. Joseph?
Okay, uh, we've had a very productive year with K-12 Lift, and they visited us at our retreat on la- Monday of last week. And they are busy working with us, so hopefully, they can make sense of the new grade assistance that state's gonna have and what they have in place. But it it has been a productive year, and they have come out, and so we are asking that we continue with them.
Ken, um, is there any way that we could be presented the data for this past school year for, like, maybe right before school starts back, or?
Yes, we're waiting until the FSA results come in. Because the only results we have in right now are the third grade reading scores. Because what that, what K-12 does, they compare FSA scores with the performance of students with I-ready. And so we want, when we get that in, we'll bring it.
Okay. When do we expect other scores then? Do we?
They haven't told us.
Could be any day, really. Um, okay, um, the the K-12 Lift is, I work in a district where we use that, and it is a very good way to see where things need to improve. And it it really uncovers what's happened in the prior year, or maybe what didn't happen and should have happened.
And the staff is really embracing it more, and and their conversation is including more.
And it shows you who's making gains, who's not making gains. It's a very, it's a very good visual way, and the kids and parents, it's a good way to go over it with them, of showing them that your child's either making gains or not making gains or meeting their goal.
So it's something that they're getting information throughout the year, then?
Right, through the the I-ready testing, the three times during the year they I-ready test, that goes in. And then based upon their FSA score, that's compared and contrast and analyzed.
It's comparing, and it's a way of seeing it and helping the teachers see are the students growing fast enough. And they looks at, they look at each student individually rather than as a class. They look at it as a group, but also they're able to look at individual students because we need that one student to grow also. And are they growing enough to keep up with their peers?
And you can really tell, like, when you get the students, where you're getting them at, like, what grade level and how far behind or how far ahead, depending on, and moving the kids who are ahead to keep moving them and not let them fall back. So I think it's a really good program. And is there a motion to approve the annual service agreement with the K-12 Lift?
I move to approve the annual service agreement with K-12 Lift.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Ms. Gibson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Carroll. Any further discussion? Just that we get that, Ms. Joseph, whenever the FSA results come in.
Okay.
If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, show a hand, please. Five oh, Ms. Bishop, for approval of the K-12 Lift. The next item, five point one-four, I spoke with Mr. Reeves. On May the second, two thousand twenty-two, we took a vote concerning Kathy Smith, who had, was in the drop, had come out of the drop or was retiring. And she had approached us at that time concerning her hours and what she was being paid and and it tried to remember, basically what it came down to was she was paid out for vacation when she went into the drop. However, after she was the five years in the drop, she accrued vacation time. And and I know that Ms. Joseph has said that we don't do that, but.
We do.
We we have done it with two other people back around at eighteen. And at that time, that night, I was under the impression that we were gonna pay her for those hours since we had the others, and we were gonna, and any others from eighteen on that may have had that time that we didn't. We weren't, and it would just be administrative people, your teachers would be, because they don't accrue vacation time. So I I don't know if I'm confused by it. I don't know if maybe y'all had a different view of it, but I was under the impression that night that we were gonna pay out the two hundred hours that were owed for the um...
I think it was two thousand twenty. Two thousand twenty.
I I don't remember the date, but I I remember that we we did, there were, it was alleged that we paid out.
In twenty.
In tw- or whatever date it was, administrative people, their hours for vacation after they had already been paid out when they went into the drop. And I'm just saying, if we did it for them, we set a precedent at that point, we need to do it for her.
Well, we didn't do it for anybody that was eligible in twenty-one, twenty-two.
Anybody from that point on that we need to do it. And I thought that was some of the reasons why we had those policies we just approved tonight. But long story short, it wasn't paid out to her, and I was under the impression that night that it was gonna be paid out to her. I don't know. I guess we need to ask, I need to ask the board, what was your impression that night?
I thought we settled it that night with paying her.
What did you think, Ms. Bell? Ms. Williamson? Mr. Carroll?
I thought that we was gonna do exactly what we did for the other ones and then and anybody else for that.
That fit that category?
Fit that category up until we changed the policy.
That's exactly.
Can I ask one thing? The, okay, so we did pay her out the two forty.
Can I speak on what we've done?
Yes.
Okay. From that meeting, the minutes read, and I did send y'all a copy of this. Following discussion, motion to approve recalculation, and I think I use that term, recalculation of annual leave and to pay out one hundred percent of sick leave hours for said person. Okay? That was the motion that was approved, that was the voting on. What actually happened? Okay, um, the sick leave was paid out one hundred percent. Whatever sick leave she had on the book, that was paid one hundred percent. The, uh, at that time, uh, we recalculated vacation time. She had been paid for two hundred hours of vacation time. That was in our records. Okay? And the law said, and then we, she was paid the remaining forty hours. So actually, she was only paid forty hours. Now, what's been alleged is that we paid a prior person for vacation time. I've had Ms. Floyd and Ms. Cruz research terms, okay? That person, unless somebody else can find something else, that person was not, when they officially entered drop, they were not paid for vacation time. They chose to wait until they fully retired, and they were paid for two hundred fourteen hours of vacation time. But state statute says that for vacation time, you cannot exceed the maximum lump sum payment allowed by the agency policy or rule, as state statute, as well as our policy at that time, use that same terminology, that we could not exceed the maximum amount lump sum payment allowed by board rule. Bottom line, uh, we had paid her for two hundred hours. We paid the, the, um, balance, which our maximum hours were two hundred forty hours. Okay? Her contention is that we paid somebody else. I research as far as I know how to, okay? If you want me to go against state statute and board rule, that's fine, but I just needed in the minutes because I was trying to follow what was put in the minutes.
My my understanding that night was she said that she always took her vacation, that when she got paid, it was for sick leave that she got paid when she entered drop. It wasn't vacation time. Now, that was my understanding from her, that she, her and her husband always took vacations, so she didn't have that much. She didn't have to, let it out.
She had vacation time left, okay? Finally, I'm not, I'm not complaining. She did have vacation time left.
So what you're saying, we paid her for the sick leave that was remaining, but within the law, we've already paid her for the vacation time?
Okay, we had paid her for, we paid her for all the sick leave, okay? That's not in question, okay? We had, the law says you can pay up to two hundred forty hours. We, when she entered, we paid two hundred, and then when she departed, we paid her forty. Her contention is that we had paid somebody else, so she wanted the same treatment, but we had not, unless somebody else can find substantiation that we had paid someone else and violating the rules.
Are we talking about annually or 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 sick leave?
No, we're talking about annually. Sick leave is a question. Annually, vacation is the same thing.
She swear we swear on sick.
Right. But that's what she's, I I believe I heard her say that night that she didn't, she didn't have two hundred hours.
Yeah. Let me say it one time.
Vacationally, when she entered drop.
She didn't, because she had to go at home.
Okay, so the the, you all set the amount of sick leave and annual leave that you decide you will be paid out. You pick one numbers. You pick one number, and this board has picked two hundred and forty hours as that number, and I don't think it's changed that as long as I've been here. So once you pick that number, under state law and as well as this board's policies, the, uh, when someone enters drop, they can choose to be paid out whatever they, sick leave they've accrued and not used at that time, up to two forty. And or they can decide that they, I'm sorry, vacation time, or they can decide that they wanna be paid out at the end. They can, what's paid out at the beginning of drop and what's paid out at the end of drop cannot exceed two hundred and forty hours for vacation, not sick, vacation, right? And that's state law. And I think what the superintendent's saying is, and correct me if I'm wrong, that she was paid out two hundred hours of vacation at the beginning. And she, and since then, she's been paid out forty hours of vacation. Two hundred plus forty adds up to two hundred and forty, and now she's been paid everything she's entitled to be paid under the law and under district policy. I think what what Mr. Alford's saying is it's not fair because other people were paid out more than the two forty. And and in my experience, I have worked, not this school district, but I've worked for other entities where administrators decided to get cute, and they just, they changed policies to try to get it where they could be paid out two forty at the beginning of drop and two forty at the end of drop, okay? That's not uncommon. Now, what what they do is they try to change policies, but the policies don't matter. You got a state statute that says you can only get paid out that total amount of hours, that one hour. And so I have advised other clients, public clients, that no, I don't care that they snuck in a policy change. The statute says you get this one amount, and that's it. And they they don't, just because they're smarter than everybody else and sneak in a policy change, doesn't mean you're gonna pay them out more than that one figure, okay? So i- if everyone agrees that she's been paid out two hundred and forty hours of vacation, I I I don't, my opinion is y'all don't have the authority to pay more than that. Now, that's my opinion. I don't sit here with a gun and make you do things, but I'm telling you my legal opinion. Now, if the, and and if someone, if a, if a administrator had finagled the system before and was paid out more than two hundred and forty hours, shame on him. But I don't think that gives you the ability to exceed your policies and that statute. Now, and... Now, and, and there's a bunch of assumptions in all that. I, the assumption is that, I, I think you're saying she was paid out 100% of her sick.
Uh huh.
Okay, what's left of the vacation? How many hours?
200 hours, and this is, this is one of...
No, 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 wait, wait, wait. 240 is the total that can be paid. What's, what is she claiming she ought to be paid?
Um, I think it's 400 or something like...
She, she's saying that she's still owed $200.
So she's saying that she had a total of 440 hours. She's been paid 240, and now she's owed 200 of vacation.
Vacation, and this is, this is, uh, uh, email that was sent to me, um, by her. Um, also, as, as I told everyone before, I was not able to use it because there was no one else in the office that could do my job. In addition, I repeatedly asked the superintendent when they were going to hire someone so I could train them. I also reminded the superintendent numerous ti- numerous times that I had six to seven months of leave on the books. And I think that's the issue is that she's saying that she never got to use it. Um, and, and the other administrator being able to use his prior to, even after he went into the drop. Again, I haven't seen the books. I don't know, I'm going by what I'm being told.
Okay.
And, and I hear what you're saying. If, if those books were massaged to make it to where it benefited that person, shame on that person, but it, it leaves us with a mess of having to deal with things not, with people not being treated fairly.
Sure.
Um, I would just like to say, if, if that's what the board want to do is pay him, but I, I, I want to clear up that we have looked in the books and the claim that he was double paid, I cannot find the evidence for that. And I just don't like to bear mouth, uh, somebody's name unfoundingly.
So y'all look, going back and look?
Uh, they have looked in the, Ms. Floyd and Ms. Cruz have looked in the old system, and they have not found where he was double paid.
Well, I don't know that it was just, uh, it was, it was, I'm not, I'm not saying one person. She, I mean, the allegations were made that night. There were four that were in that period, two teachers and two administrators.
But it'd be unlikely a teacher could get it.
The teachers wouldn't get it, so it'd be the two administrators. So it just said one administrator, there's two.
Okay.
Again, as, as a chairman, I'm just asking that we need to make sure that, that, that vacation pay for those two administrators that went out during that time, that they were not paid vacation time before drop and after drop.
More than 240?
More than 240.
Yeah, it can be divided, but it's can't, the total's not supposed to exceed 240.
In my opinion, if they were paid, either one of them were paid more than 240, then she needs to be paid her time.
I, I only asked to, to research one because that was the one name she kept bringing up. And that one person, from the information I have received, they were not double paid.
Um, and, and I'm not asking to announce the name here.
I'm not, but I'll give it to you.
If you give it to the superintendent, then maybe the, uh, the thing to do would be to have the superintendent's staff research that. And you can also reach out to, um, the employee. I mean, if she's got evidence of this, you know, maybe that's something the board wants to take into consideration.
I just, I just want to make sure that everybody is being as fairly as we can because the going, the going homes up here sometimes is, is beyond the board of how things are done that we don't know. And then we're caught up with having to handle something that we have no...
And, and these are very touchy issues. And they come right when people don't need real touchy issues, when they're trying to retire.
Right.
And I, and, and it's, like I say, it's just, it, it, these are hard issues. And I certainly sympathize with you.
So what is the best way to handle this? We need to, we need to verify this other person? Or the people who retired during that time? Any administrators who retired during that time?
Um, I, I think for, for what you have told me, that would be the next step.
It wouldn't be just administrators. Wouldn't it be any 12-month person?
Sure. Um, I, I can tell you, I mean, and, and I don't want to belabor the point. You've heard my opinion. My opinion is even if you paid out those folks, you can't pay out, pay her more than 240. If though, you feel like there's, you, you need to try to be fair to everybody, which I certainly understand, I think the next step would be to research and see if, if, if we have evidence that people actually were paid out more than 240 hours total between the time they entered drop and the time, and their, uh, final day, their date of separation with the district.
If, if they were paid out that amount, more than that amount, what...
In my, in my opinion, I, I still don't think you can exceed the 240. I, I don't think, because you didn't follow it one time, now you don't follow it forever. I think the, the, in my opinion, they get paid 240. But now, I think what you all had said in the past was that you all didn't care for that opinion and you were wanting to treat everybody equally and all that. So I think if that's where you're going, then the next thing to do would be to, uh, research it.
I guess the other question I'm asking is if people truly did get above 240, can we ask them to pay back the amount that was above the 240?
Always ask.
Yeah, we can ask.
You can ask. And I, and I have had that conversation come up with another entity. And the idea wa- and, and what they had us do was write letters and request they pay it back, and nobody paid it back. And then when nobody pays it back, your option is, well, you can either let it go or you can sue.
In 2020, did the board, the board vote on that?
Nope.
Mr. Carroll, at no point in my 20 years of being on the board has anything with drop ever come before us.
Not.
Never, never, never did we see any of this. So this is, this is the first time in 20 years that this has ever been before us in any type of way.
If, if, if the superintendent had approved it, they'd have paid it out and that wouldn't have been, you know, it wouldn't have come up here. But, but what should have happened is nothing should have been paid out except following the statutes and the policies.
Right. So I guess at this point, um...
Ask them to research?
Research anyone in 2020 that was an administrator 12 months to make sure that it wasn't more than 240 that was paid out. Again, I'm just want to try to be fair to everyone and, um... But again, it should be all the administrators in any 12-month. Okay, um, does, is, does that? And I guess that will be brought back to us at the next meeting.
Okay, right, I was going to say, I don't begrudge anyone anything that's due to them. We want to treat everyone fairly. But now, what would be the repercussions of going against the state law?
I, I don't think you're allowed.
You're, see, that's, that's the only thing that's...
If, if I can make a, a suggestion, why don't you let the superintendent and her staff research those?
Yes.
Email it to everybody, and then y'all, y'all decide if you want to bring it up at the next meeting. Um, right now, I think what the superintendent's told you is that Ms. Smith's been paid out 240 vacation and 100% sick, right? Okay, so if, if you don't find any, um, uh, anyone that you feel was treated differently than that, then there's no reason to bring it back up, I would think. And then if you find there is somebody that was treated different, maybe y'all want to bring it back up and talk about it.
You're concerned at her just not being able to get off to use hours? And that's just bad luck?
Yeah, I, that, that's not really something that you can easily fix once someone's retired. I mean, you know, and, and again, it, it's also a, a problem because, like, we've been talking about this whole meeting, about the division of, of responsibilities between the board and the superintendent. You know, the superintendent, not Ms. Joseph at that time, but the superintendent was the one that was supposed to see to what people got to use vacation time when they were supposed to and, and all of that. I, I don't know that y'all could have corrected it at the time, you know?
Okay, well, that, um, adjourns this part of the meeting. At this time, is there anything from the attorney?
No, sir.
Ms. Joseph or superintendent, I was jumped to, sorry.
Um, Mr. Chairperson, everything's going well in the superintendent's office. We are busy trying to find, um, people to reemploy. We still have faith. We've got a lot of audience, but we have faith. We're trying, but we are looking for competent people.
Is that...
That's it.
Okay, Ms. Williamson?
No.
Nothing? Mr. Carroll?
Oh, sir.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes, I was just going to say, I'm glad that our board members bring different items to light for discussion. But whoever gets into these positions, I hope that they receive 100% support from the district. In other words, whether we like them or we don't, they're there, and we want to give them support. And hopefully, they'll stay with us if they're, if they meet our expectations.
Okay, is that it? Is that it, Ms. Gibson?
Well, that's it.
Ms. Bell? Nothing? Um, I want to say this past week, or I guess two weeks ago, Ms. Bell, Ms. Gibson, and myself went to Florida School Board Association Conference in Tampa, and it was a good conference. And, um, I think we learned a lot of different stuff at this, um, conference. Um, one thing that I'm, um, asking for, um, maybe at the next meeting, and I don't know that we maybe need to do a workshop concerning this, is for the board to set goals concerning, um, goals for the district for the next three years. And maybe we need to wait until our FSA scores come in so we will have a baseline of what we want the goals to be. But we thinking of, um, three to four goals based upon the speaker we heard from Texas who spoke about goal setting. Um, I want to thank, um, the department heads who, the information I requested for giving it to me. Um, and I'm going through that. Um, this past week, I had the opportunity to attend the Autism Institute at Florida State. Um, very interesting. Many of our students today are autistic that we have. We're having a, a greater, um, degree of students compared to when I first started 27 years ago as a therapist. We saw maybe, um, one or two in a school. Now it's many. Um, so that's good that they're doing this institute for all, um, teachers and therapists free of charge. The Autism Institute at Florida State is through the School of Medicine. Um, one thing that I would like, um, Ms. Joseph, is, and you can set up the time, is for all, um, schools to come and present their plan of action for the 22, 23 school year.
I sure will.
Prior to school starting.
Well, we haven't spent...
Okay, um, the other thing that I had talked to Ms. Joseph about, I'm not telling her anything that I hadn't talked to her about, is, um, I'm requesting for, when the next school year begins, that, um, that every board member receive a discipline overview each meeting for the prior, um, week or two weeks at the school side of what's happened. Not students' names back when Ms. Williamson and I came on. We received a packet of every child's discipline referral in the district. Um, I don't want that at this time. I think that if we can just have it broken down into discipline report by the number of fighting, the number of the other areas, for the simple reason that, um, I'm not saying this to be like begrudging to anyone, but many times, we're not told things and we hear stuff on the street. And at least if we would see that there was a fight or someone was arrested or someone was whatever at the school, we would know how to respond to it. Or we could say, well, I saw that. Or we could call the school and ask, just a way where better communication between the board and the schools that we know what's going on and we're not surprised by, um, things or not hearing things on the street. And as a board member, that's the worst thing, especially if it's a bad event that's happened. We hear someone at Winn-Dixie or Busy Bee or the post office that confronts us about it, and all we can say is, we have no, I have no idea of what you're talking about. I know that maybe some of y'all have had that encounter, but that's a bad feeling as a board member. And again, maybe this will be a way where we can, um... Find out what's going on at the school and, and hear it before it's old news. Um, that is all that, um, I have. And, um, just that we be informed when the FSA scores come out.
Let me, if I could go back to one thing about the conference. Uh, it was, uh, it was a very good conference, and I'm thankful for, to be allowed to participate in it, of course. Okay, I thought that there was, one of the, um, presenters mentioned on the, and I know how the board members feel about this. On the agenda, they place an academic update. And, um, in other words, um, and it may not happen at every meeting, but at least it's right there on the agenda. And they can, it can be addressed by Mrs. Hill or, um, Ms. Shirley or whatever. In other words, it could be, it's just part of the agenda.
We can request, uh, to be on there. I know that...
That discipline could also, you know, in other words, it's, if there's nothing to report, so be it.
The academic update would be at least the three times of the year, whenever you do the progress monitoring.
Yeah.
And then the discipline could be every meeting because you could have the prior meetings. That was something good that many of the big districts, um, go out in like three years in advance where it's down, on this date, three years from now, we're going to be talking about academics of what's going on. Where, where, where board members shouldn't be having to ask for information, it's the set time when it's presented. And staff will know what it is.
At the beginning of the meeting, before the meeting?
During the meeting.
Just anywhere.
It's an agenda item.
Agenda item.
We're trying to go set it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Set it, then we get the outcome of what the, the data and information.
Right, yeah, that would, like, if, if they were to do I-Ready, say, at Christmas, then say like in January, January, the first meeting in January, second meeting is set on there, that this is when they present us the data and the outcomes.
I think we're more apt to get it if it's right there, black and white.
Well, yeah. And, and again, board members shouldn't be having to ask staff for information. They should be presenting.
Well, if it's here, then it shouldn't be, you know, it shouldn't be a problem.
I'm going to put it, uh, as an agenda item.
Yeah, I mean, that, that was, thank you for remembering that, Ms. Gibson. That was something that was, um...
Well, you brought that, actually, I, it came to me when you were talking.
A nice way to make sure that stuff is there where we don't have to ask for information. And, and again, always your target would be on academic achievement and where you are and where you need to go. So if there's no, nothing else for tonight, is there a motion to adjourn?
I made a motion to adjourn.
Okay, it's been properly made by Ms. Bell.